Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Rutherford County Board of Education Regular Meeting. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Board Member Lisa Moore.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience and staff, the board would appreciate it if you would join us in a moment of silence, please. I'll say this first tonight, so we get it out of the way. We have already discussed a number of these things on Tuesday night, so we will read them again, of course, but I just wanted you to know that we're not flying through these items. We've already had considerable discussion on some of them. On the agenda, on number four on your list there, Board, we didn't move anything, so I need a motion to adopt this.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. A second.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Estes. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And on the approval consent agenda, I need a motion to approve that, please.
No move.
That was Mr. Hodge. Thank you. A second.
Second.
And Mr. Young. Thank you, Mr. Young. Any comments? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You go to number six. Any visitors tonight, Ms. Michaels? No visitors tonight, facilities. Tab number two. Number seven, we're going to go directly to B. Mr. Director?
Yes. Professional construction and design of related services. In the past, engineering and construction has recommended professional service firms based on jobs or for certain project. We would like to begin the process of yearly bringing these firms back for your information and approval. Most of these firms have been working for RCS for many years and have always done an excellent job. However, from time to time, we have need for more than one firm for a particular area and would also like to recommend a couple in the category as well. The following firms are recommended for approval. Geo-technical investigation and construction material testing. ECS Southeast LLP. Call Your Engineering and Surveying. Call Your Engineering. Bird Surveying. Structural Steel Testing. Billy Melton. Civil Design. Barge Coffin Associates. Architectural Design Services. Inkley Garcia Architecture and Interior Design. Aerial Drone Services. Southern Skies Drone Services. Recommend approval to approve the professional service providers listed.
Comments? Questions for the Director? If there are none, need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Holliday, thank you. A second.
Second.
Mr. Blair won that round. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Blackman Elementary, Part C.
Blackman Elementary School. Principal Cynthia Ford has requested to purchase additional playground equipment for the third grade playground. Included with this equipment will be additional mulch areas. They are making this request at no cost to Rutherford County School Board. Approximately cost is seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars. Seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars and is funded by the PTO. Engineering and construction has reviewed this project and recommends approval. Motion to approve, Blackman Elementary, request to add additional playground equipment.
Questions for the Director? Need a motion?
No move.
Mr. Young, I need a second.
Second.
Ms. Moore, thank you. If there are no questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Part D.
Solidity Utility District, Rutherford County. Solidity Utility is requesting two easements on our Stewart's Creek campus. One is on the west side of the campus and one on the north. Solidity is requesting to install one six-inch and one twelve-inch water line to extend their services to ours and better provide water pressure for our campus as well as the surrounding neighbors. This request is at no cost of Rutherford County Schools. Motion to approve the installation of the two new water lines and the easement necessary for Solidity Utility.
Questions from the Board?
No move.
Mr. Blair, a second. Mr. Estes is seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Part D.
Rocky Fork Elementary. RG Anderson has encountered a large area of existing materials unsuitable to structurally support our building. We're anticipating a worst case of removal and replacement of approximately 25,000 cubic yards of material. This material will be hauled off-site and suitable material will be brought in and replaced. Anticipated cost for this is 1.3 million dollars. Just to follow up on that, I think today, Mr. Lee brought in the contract. Mr. Lee, you want to go over that part in the contract?
Yes, sir. Board members, I placed it in front of you tonight. What I've brought is the bid tab from the last two projects. There was concern about the price that we're paying and I'm not minimizing that price at all, but what I've provided for you tonight in the first section is the Rocky Fork Elementary. This is the actual bids submitted by each contractor that bid the project included with their price and the alternate for the health clinic is also required unit prices. This will give you an idea of what each contractor bid. They're all pretty fairly close, within a dollar, two dollars of each other. So I provide that just as an example for your information to help with the cost that we're incurring. I've also included our last bid, which was the bid prior to this, which was Oakland Middle School. Their bid tab, which shows all the different alternates, but also their unit cost and that now some of them are fairly close and there's a large discrepancy in some. We're bound by these prices, just like we're bound by their bid. Whoever is low bid, their alternate price, whether it's higher or lower than another bidder, is how we determine who's ultimately low and we're bound by these unit prices. And that's part of the bid process. I'm just providing this for your information, so you can see how the process works and what the different numbers are based on those contractors. Once we go to contract, we've selected who the contractor is. If there's any alternates involved, we use their numbers and we also use their unit price number.
I guess I have a question on, as far as the dirt itself, that's our dirt. So if they moving the dirt off the property and if they're selling it, do we get reimbursed for that?
It's all part of that unit price.
Okay, I just think we need to look at that.
They're actually, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just think we need to look at that in the future. I mean, if they're taking dirt off our property, we're paying them to take the dirt off the property and they're making money off the dirt that's our dirt, then I think there should be restitution in that as far as...
The way to do that is then we don't have unit prices in our bid and then once we get to that point, then we would be negotiating, trying to determine what those unit prices are. This is standard, and I understand your point, but this is standard construction practice.
My problem with the whole thing is we're paying more money to remove waste dirt than probably what we paid for the property. And it's just, it just bothers me that we're spending that kind of money to move dirt off our property.
I agree. I mean, don't disagree, I'm sorry. I just provided this for your information.
I think going forward, I think what we can do is look at the, and I've expressed just a, maybe look at the contract, share it with all Board members, so that we, if there's any question up front.
No problem.
Motion to approve the removal and replacement of approximately 25,000 cubic yards of material at an anticipated cost of 1.3 million dollars.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Moore?
A couple other questions, thank you. So the motion for approval is for RG Anderson to do the work. And if I'm correct, on the removal of the dirt, okay. And if I'm understanding these correctly, these are separate bids that we got for that specific job from these different contractors, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
That starts with page three bid form, which is RG Anderson's. There's four different categories based on the cubic yard. I don't see where RG Anderson is the lowest bidder. Help me understand that, because for instance, I'm looking at the one on for, is it Delanjalee's Diamond Construction?
Right, but they weren't the low bid on the project. This is part of their bid. So if you look at the front tab sheet...
Oh, it's part of the original bid.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So they provide this, so that if they are the low bid and they are awarded the job, their unit prices are the ones that we use.
I see.
It locks them into a unit price.
Okay.
So that we don't have to argue and fuss at a later date.
Okay, so we don't really have an alternative or another...
No matter. You can't pick a number from one sub and a number from another sub and a number, it doesn't, it's basically what we, was determined at Rocky Fork, because we decided we weren't doing the health clinic. RG Anderson was the low bid based on their bid. So because RG Anderson was low and that their unit prices are what goes in the contract. If we had determined that we were going to do health clinic, then you would have added these three up, I mean, the two numbers together to determine who was low.
Okay, and given that and going back actually to a point that Mr. Young just made, do you have the records or note of what did we pay for this property?
Thirty thousand acres.
How many acres?
Seventy-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're speaking of a worst-case scenario of 25,000 cubic yards of material. Would RG Anderson be responsible for engineering evaluation on-site that would tell us, hey, at 21,000, we were good and we were okay to cap there? Or do we feel like that engineering has already been done and 25,000 is where we're going to be?
Based on the footprint of the building and the maximum depth that we would have to go to, should we not encounter rock earlier, that is the maximum.
Okay.
What we are presently doing is they excavate the material, Call Your Engineering is on-site.
Got it.
They, when they, if we do not hit rock, they go down to five and a half feet below the bottom of the footing. That's our maximum depth, no rock or anything, that's maximum. If we hit rock prior to that, we stop.
Right.
They do it in grid sections and Call Your Engineering works with the grading contractor. They sign off that, yes, these are the depths, this is the width, this is, and between the two, that's how we determine the actual depth. And then when that's all determined, so it's up and down.
Sure.
The bottom is. So yes, we have Call Your Engineering representing and being our representative and they have to sign off that, yes, this is the grades they went to.
Call Your could save us a little bit here by the site evaluation and, but we're working with this worst-case scenario.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Right, okay.
Further questions?
I have one other. Are we looking at other opportunities to see where we can cut costs on this project, see if we make this up?
Yes, but I, yes, sir, but I do not foresee us making up this kind of money.
I know it's a large amount of money, but every little bit helps, so...
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay.
That's why we're trying to find suitable soils in some of our other areas where we're doing cuts for parking lots. And we have found 2,500 to 3,000 yards so far, so that we're not importing material, we're using the material on-site, so it's a different number. Instead of being the 51, it's 35. So we, yes, sir, we're exhausting all efforts to try and reduce this number.
Further questions? You've heard the recommendation, need a motion to approve?
No move.
Mr. Blair, thank you. A second?
Second.
Mr. Holliday, thank you. No further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number, letter F.
Eagle School Highway 99 entrance design. Barge Coffin has submitted a proposal for design approval, bidding and construction oversight for the Highway 99 school entrance. This fee is 8,700. This is to be funded out of the building program. Motion to approve Barge Coffin for the Highway 99 entrance at Eagle.
Mr. Lee, help the chairman out here. Tell me in just lame in terms, what's that 8,700 going to pay for? I realize what it says here, but tell me again.
They're going to design the drawing that we need. They're also going to take care of the review process with T-Dot. They will also assist in the bid process and they will provide construction administration through the contract to see that it's...
So this is everything?
Yes, sir.
All the way through the finished product?
Yes, sir. Art to finish.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Clarification of exactly what you just asked as well. It says construction oversight. This isn't paying for the pavement and the work?
No, sir.
Okay, so this is oversight, supervision of the work, but there will be another bill that is the actual expense of...
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Well, now, excuse me, Mr. Lee. That's exactly what I was asking.
That's right.
I said beginning to end and we're through. We're not through, are we?
The design, you're through.
But not the actual, they won't be doing the work.
Okay, all right, okay, I didn't ask a good question.
They're architects for this roadwork.
Okay, well, Mr. Holliday asked a much better question. So at some point...
It would have been a good bid, though.
Yeah.
Eighty-seven hundred.
It'd be a really good bid.
I thought that was mighty cheap, but at any rate...
Yes, sir.
So eventually, probably very soon, we're going to have another thing to actually build the road.
Approve the contractor, yes, sir. We're going to bid it, we're hoping to have it bid by the early October.
Exactly what Mr. Holliday said. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holliday.
I knew where you were going.
Yeah, well, I evidently couldn't get there on my own, but I appreciate your help. I need a motion to approve Part F. Mr. Blair, thank you. A second?
Second.
Mr. Estes, thank you. If there are no further questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
RG?
Oakland High School Gymnasium New HVAC System. At the request of the Engineering and Construction Department, Maynard Select has submitted a proposal to design, manage, and install an energy-efficient HVAC system for the gymnasium at Oakland High. The system design is for the removal of the existing system, installation of four energy-efficient units, ductwork, energy management controls, and gas piping as required. The cost of this project is 485,000. The proposal conforms to Tennessee Bid Law 12-4-115. Motion to approve Maynard Select's proposal for Oakland High School Gym at the cost not to exceed 485,000. This will be funded through the capital improvement budget.
Questions from the Board?
Curious, because it says energy-efficient units. Is this something that, how to put this, the whole energy-efficient school initiative and the things that have been done, is that in keeping with that whole program? And I guess the question would be, because I know some of those things in the past, we've been able to fund through some grants and things through that program, right?
I think we have. Mr. Lee, this would follow in an energy efficient, but it would not be what she's referencing.
Correct.
Okay.
Riverdale is going to need the same thing?
We have gotten, we have been able to get low interest rate, even three-quarter or 1% for the energy-efficient school initiatives that we've done.
Again, Riverdale's the same age. I'm just asking.
My answer would be probably.
Okay. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Young. A second?
Second.
Mr. Estes, thank you. If there are no further questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Part H?
Proposal for lead water testing. At the request of Engineering and Construction for Austin Environmental, has been requested to provide a budget for the new state mandated lead water testing. This testing is required for all schools built prior to 1979 and is required to first draw samples from a water source that has not been used for 24 hours. We're expecting some clarification from the state soon and will begin implementation prior to January 1st, 2019. The estimated cost at this time is 31,945, but expect it to be more. Now, we did get a little brief information, this can be staged. Mr. Lee, I don't know if I discussed this with you or not, but there's going to be more time, as long as we showing a good faith effort, we don't necessarily have to have this completed by that date.
That's when the state law is implemented.
Right.
And we've got time beyond that to do it.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And you did mention it could be sinks, anything where we're using as a source to clean food or get water for drinking purposes.
Yes, sir. And a number of our older schools don't have water fountains in the cafeterias, therefore they have to provide water in a pitcher, which means they're getting that water out of the kitchen, so we have to test those as well.
And one other thing that I saw on one of the webinars is like sports teams getting water out of fountains and stuff like that.
Yes, sir. They're using a, as I call it, a hose bib. If they're using a hose bib on the side of the building, we've got to test it, too.
Either that or shut it off.
Shut it off and no longer allow them to use it for access. That's correct.
Okay, this is an FYI item, and I think Mr. Lee was kind enough to really go through everything last night, which we, Tuesday night, which we appreciated, but even with that said, are there other questions?
Mr. Chairman, before we go one to nine, is, do you have a plan for letter A or will we not cover that?
Director?
I'm sorry?
Letter A.
Is this Smurta Mill?
Yes.
We, I thought we went over that, we're not moving, making a motion, it was for information only on work session. There's no motion attached to it.
That is correct.
Financial matters?
Financial matters. Twenty eighteen nineteen general purpose school amendments, Fund 141, Safe Schools and School Safety. This amendment covers the additional 1,306,923 in Tennessee Safe School and School Safety Funds that the system will receive this year. 1,097,740 in non-recurring and 209,183 in recurring funding. We receive 209,170,000 in Safe School Funding for the 2017-2018 school year. These funds will be expended for the safety equipment that will be approved as part of the Board's 2018-2019 safety plan. Motion to amend the 2018-19 General Purpose School Budget Fund 141 for the additional 1,306,923 in Tennessee Safe School and School Safety Funds that the system will receive this year. Other state funds account for Account 46-590 and related 1,306,923 expenditure for safety equipment, Account 72-620-701 as presented.
Any comments? Questions, Board? Need a motion?
No move.
Estes, thank you. A second?
Second.
Young, thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Part B?
Twenty eighteen nineteen Capital Projects Budget Amendment Fund 177. Each July 1, outstanding purchase orders in the fund are liquidated. The funds go to the fund balance, which is in the fund count 34685, committed for capital projects. These purchase orders are for projects that had not been finished by June 30. This amendment takes those funds out of 34685 committed for capital projects and rebudgets the expenditures for projects that haven't been completed. This year, we have 1,542,888 in funds to re-budget. Motion to amend the 2018-19 Capital Projects Budget Fund 177 by reducing Account 34685 committed for capital projects by 1,542,888 and by increasing the maintenance and repair service buildings, Account 91300-335, by the same amount of 1,542,888 as presented.
Questions for the Director? Need a motion to approve?
No move.
Mr. Hodge, thank you. A second?
Second.
Mr. Blair, thank you. No questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Part C?
EESI Loan for Energy Conservation Project. Our 2018 EESI project will go to Health and Education Committee at their September meeting. This project totals 1,282,842 and will put energy management system in 15 more of our schools. We are seeing savings from these energy conservation projects. In 2011-12, we used 88,256, 88,256,551 kilowatt-hours of electricity for 38,883 K through 12 students. This is a 1.05% increase for 6,000 more students in two completely new schools, which are Stewart's Creek High and Rocky Fork Middle, and one rebuilt school, John Coleman. If we adjust out these three schools, we have a 6.8% drop in our kilowatt-hours for the school we had, for the schools we had in 2011-12. At these 2011-12 schools, our savings has covered the rate increases we have seen since then. Now, what schools, Mr. Lee, are these 15 that we're putting, do you know? Do you have a list of those schools that come in?
I do not.
But it's the 15 that we didn't have them in, I know that.
That is correct. It's the final 15, all the rest do.
Remember, on the budget, we had no increase in heat, air, water. So this has been a very successful program. It's been going on, I don't know, about six years, maybe? Six, seven years? It's been remarkable savings, I think. Any questions, Board, or the Director?
Just...
Ms. Moore?
Yeah, thank you. Curious on this, the million, too, that it's going to cost and the savings are apparent, you know, from what we've experienced. Have we crunched any numbers at all as to how long we anticipate it would take us with these 15 new schools to recoup that money that we've spent on this?
One of, that was one of the questions I was asking, Mr. Sandvig, and he went through and gave me a pretty good lesson on that. You want to share that with Board?
I hope I remember what I said to you.
Well, if you don't, I'll try to...
The average project is probably in that three to four-year range for a payback. These are very high paybacks, and this is without even looking at the weather norm. This was just looking at our actual bills and consumption for this period.
So you anticipate this is going to be...
Yeah, these projects are comparable, varying estimates, but average probably about three to four-year range.
And I know you'd shared that data with us before, but thank you for refreshing on that.
Any other questions? There's no motion here. Number 10, Director's update?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, the T-VOS data was released today. I think all of you got that. There's a filter on there on the overall composite that you can go up and click on all our schools. As I stated in the email, we had some good things and we had some things that we were working on, but just a few things that was shared in a webinar and also with the commissioner of our 147 school districts, 147 school districts across the state, 59 had a level five overall school-wide composite. We were one of those 59. I took a look at those 59 and there was only three, what I would reference as a large school districts that actually scored a five. We were one of them, along with Williamson County and Wilson County. Of the 147 schools and districts in the state of Tennessee, only 11 or 7.5% actually scored a five across the board. And every one of those schools, I went back, it was kind of interesting, they were small, rural area, and they were in East Tennessee, Northeast Tennessee. So that was just something, just, I mean, I thought that was kind of interesting, because we'd, we'd discussed, I think, in a principal's meeting at the beginning of the school year, one of the things that we were seeing with the schools that experienced some growth and achievement were in the east. And, you know, it's just, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but, you know, they were the ones that first started the tests. I don't know if that has anything to do anything. I will say, as I stated in my email to you, that we don't, we're not going to make excuses, we're going to own it and we're going to move forward, but I think we'd all be naive to think that there wasn't some impact on the online testing. But I think we'd all be naive to think that there wasn't some impact on the online testing. The draft, the paper that we received from Commissioner McQueen, I have to be perfectly honest with you, it's a spin. So, yes, I may not be trying to be critical. I guess I am being just open with you, but it's kind of, we're spinning some things here. But as we go forward, you know, we're working very hard. We're identifying some things. Some of the data is useful, some of it we can use, and we will continue to use it to get better. Next item was our enrollment for today. And Mr. Zago, you have all that for us?
Yes, sir. I have some fresh numbers from this morning. As you know, it varies from not only day-to-day, but from hour-to-hour at times. As of this morning, we were up 1,117 students from end of the year to the beginning of the year using I Now information. The numbers for the grade bands, I'm up 184 students in our K-5, 600 even in our middle schools, 6'8", and 363 in high school. So, it's not changed a whole lot in the grade bands. We're still seeing those, the largest growth in the middle school than the high school and the elementary school after that. There's a few numbers missing out there because we have schools that are, that are the, like Thermofrances or Central Magnet, or those schools that don't fit nicely within a K-5 or a 6'8" or a high school grade band. Questions?
Mr. Zago, and I'm assuming that we still anticipate that that number's going to continue to increase between now and Labor Day?
What I've seen is, is as our people are working diligently, our attendance clerks are in the school, some of our students that we terminate, we call no-shows, they were enrolled last year, and they have not shown up in a seat this year as they roll out. But we're also seeing growth in some of the other areas of students, and we're getting our preschool students in. As you know, that takes quite a while to enter each student into I Now, and as that's coming, we're still seeing that 46,100, 200 and some change, depending on how that goes. And that number's staying fairly stable in I Now, but the people or the grade levels are changing slightly within that.
We're still hitting close to 3% growth.
I'll be honest with you. I stuck some numbers to some of our schools, and I noticed that Dr. Sullivan was in here, and from day-to-day is what I play with, with numbers. He's up over 200 students from this same day, the seventh day of last year, which will give him, he has basically 41.77% growth from day-to-day. So, it's quite a bit of growth. He's experiencing several more students. But then that's, that's not the typical growth that we're seeing in some of the schools. I'm seeing schools like Whitworth Buchanan, it's over 6% growth. Thermofrances had had over 4% growth. I've seen Smyrna Primary with 4% growth. Laverne Middle, which is an unusual school for me because their clients tend to show up a little bit later and toward Labor Day, and they're over 4% growth. But I've got schools that have 9% growth. Rocky, I'm sorry, Rockvale Elementary is my greatest growth as far as an elementary school. It's almost 10% growth in that elementary school, which we're seeing those bodies. And they, I talked to the principal there today, and she said they're registering more today. So, we've got, half of our schools with 3% or greater growth.
Typically, you're going to see more growth toward, as we come toward Labor Day. One of the things we're tracking, that we haven't tracked here in using this to, in the future, is mobility rate. And I'll be sending that to you as we get a new number of mobility rates. Some of the, it's not uncommon for during the school year to lose 100 in a high school and gain 100 and come out with zero in growth. I mean, or maybe even more than that. And it's, it's getting more prevalent throughout, throughout our county.
I'll ask you to repeat that again, if you would, please. The 1,100 and how many total? That this is the grand total?
My, my number is 1,117.
Okay. Between what two dates are we talking about here?
That is between the very end of the school year, I Now, and this day-to-day, and I Now and students registered in our student information system.
Okay.
That would be May 30th and today.
Basically a school. Middle school, right? A middle school. Basically a middle school.
More than our.
Yeah, yeah. Unless you're Blackman Middle.
And we've got a couple of elementaries running close to that as well. Rockvale's coming very close to that number.
There, excuse me, are there any of our middle schools right now that are not at capacity?
I read a few numbers there. Whitworth Buchanan's growing, and it was one of those that hasn't quite made the numbers that some of the others have. But almost all of our middle schools are at capacity or actually above what they were built for.
As I look at this, it certainly indicates to me with the extreme growth, 600 students in only three grades in middle school, 363 students in only four grades in high school, 184 students over six grades, K through 5. It's no longer birth rate inside of Rutherford County. This is relocation. This is people coming to Rutherford County, and the middle school and high school need is, is going to be significant as opposed to the elementary need. And that's, that's a curious circumstance because that's not, that's not a perpetual. It almost indicates, you know, kind of a bubble of population. Do we see that?
We, we're seeing areas like the Blackman Stewart's Creek Corridor area, they actually own 1/4 of our, our growth, those few schools there. And so, we're seeing in both elementary, middle and high school in those areas there as well. But I kind of threw a few numbers together for the high school to see, so I could talk to Mr. Spurlock about our high school growth. But if I've made every high school at 1,900 students, our newest high school would start at almost 1,600.
I think anytime you go near that corridor of Williamson and Davidson, that's where your growth is going to come. Because your infrastructures, I mean, you've got 840, you've got 24. That's where it's going to come.
How many sixth graders did we get from Murfreesboro City?
I looked at that as well. We're getting a little more than we normally had been getting. Our count today for 5th grade was 3,101 students, and if you go to 6th grade, it's 3,652. So, you're looking at 551 student difference. So, we're picking up about 551 students, just roughly from the city at that point. We do have a bubble though, that is going through, that's kind of a little anomaly in 8th grade. When they hit my high school next year, it's going to cause about a 500-student jump in my high schools automatically when those 8th graders hit my 9th grade.
Good thing Rockvale's coming online.
Yeah, it'll increase. That has about a little over 500 students in it, and when that hits 9th grade, my population in high schools will be raised by that without even any growth.
They're also not offering the free lunch everywhere again, which was a reason that some of them stayed.
Yes, sir. And that's what we've realized, not all the schools are, and we're picking up a few more of them. And of course, we see that same increase in 7th grade too, because the rest of those students show up in our 7th grade classrooms.
On one level, and just one level, this is really kind of discouraging in a way, isn't it? I mean, it is. And it, it used to be that if you had a need, if you had something that you absolutely had to do, and you had to build something, you built it, and you could see immediate relief. We can't add on or build fast enough. There's no way that we, that we can, it's just discouraging. You know, we want to solve a problem, and it just, I don't know, it's just kind of discouraging to me. Particularly when we're opening new schools left and right. And we'll open Rockvale. You just said 1,600, which is almost at capacity.
If we did perfect real life.
Right. And we will help other high schools in the county, but we'll just get them down, each one of them, a little bit.
We're seeing a huge amount of growth at Oakland High School at the moment as well.
Any questions for the director? Anything else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to go back real quickly to the subject of the testing results. And first of all, I just, I want to tell the director, I, you know, appreciate when you sent that email out this morning and talking about taking responsibility for these scores. However, I just want to vocalize from my own perspective, when I look at these scores, and especially the cumulative scores that where some of our schools did not do so well, and I think back to everything that happened and transpired last year with the whole testing debacle, I'm struggling, struggling tremendously to find any credibility in some of these scores at all. And yet, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, but yet, we continue to get excuses, et cetera, from the state. And that's one of the things I'm going to talk real briefly about in my legislative report, but I don't know, I just.
Well, let me just point out, case in point, you know, we had several schools, I think maybe a couple maybe, that were a 5 on overall and were reward schools. I know one in particular was a reward school. You know, it's just, it's very challenging for me to think that you can go from a 5 to a 1 in one year, and with the same structure that you have.
I find it interesting that those far east Tennessee schools that did improve were the ones, I believe, where the supposed alleged dump truck cut the cyber cable too, or the optic cable too, right? Anyway.
That's a curious dump truck. He sent me a picture of the dump truck.
I did, I did.
Looks suspiciously like something off Sesame Street. Oh, if there are no questions with the director, Ms. Moore will come right back to you with the Tennessee Legislative Network.
Thank you. There have been, there has been some activity. Of course, there's been a lot of activity, obviously, with the elections and the primaries and everything, leading up to the November elections. And so, I think it's noteworthy that we're going to, we're going to experience and see some changes as far as state reps from all over the state, of course, and a couple here in middle Tennessee. Of course, we know that Don White is giving up her seat as a state House rep and running a course for the Senate. And I think it's noteworthy that we specifically should be paying attention to this and keeping up with it in that she holds a seat on both of the education committees currently in the House of Representatives. So, that's going to open up those seats for those committees, which are going to be very key and critical, I think, especially to us here in Rutherford County. Now, whether or not we have any Rutherford County representatives that will be appointed to those seats, I think remains to be seen. Whoever takes her seat, I don't know that they necessarily have any education background. And I do understand that there's representatives from other areas of the state that won their primaries a couple of, I guess it's been two weeks ago now, that do come from education backgrounds. So, I guess a lot of that's going to depend on the speaker and who they decide to be, decide to appoint. But there was a real notable loss in the Senate as well that most of you are probably aware of, and that is Reginald Tate, who's Democratic House Rep from Shelby County, lost his seat that he's been in since 2006 to a Democratic competitor. So, that's going to open up also a Senate Education Committee seat that was pretty key, that he's played a pivotal role in for the past number of years that he's been on it. There were some summers, there was some summer study activity last week. Most of it consisted of, again, addressing testing issues and the State Department of Education doing another one of their presentations, which I have not had the opportunity to watch yet. They don't have a video posted, and I was not able to go to the committee meeting. But from what I have heard, it was pretty much more of the same. It's already been presented in previous presentations, and I'll leave my comments at that, on that subject. Now, House or Senate committee meetings on education are scheduled, that I can see right now, for at least the next several weeks.
Questions for Ms. Moore? Mr. Holliday, anything to add from Tuesday night's comments?
Chairman, I'm just going to echo once again the significant impact of Rutherford County on the Carl Perkins Career and Technical Education legislation that was signed into law July 31st. Workforce development as well as career pathways are terms that are used here in Rutherford County and have been for five or, five or more years. And these are now the new buzzwords that are in this legislation that the rest of the country are talking about, and their genesis comes from Rutherford County. Our significance is apparent.
Any questions for Mr. Holliday? Thank you both. Number 13, general discussion by board members. I have only, only one really topic here, maybe two, I guess. Ms. Michaels, the 28th and 30th is our next meetings, and is the 28th at 5 o'clock and the 30th at 4 o'clock?
Four meetings.
Okay. Well, we're going to get together at 4 on the 30th, right? If, if we so choose. Okay? And then, a next meeting after that will be 5 o'clock on the 5th of September? Is that right? Okay. And I talked to Mr. Tollitt today, and he called and wanted me to invite the board to Eagleville's first football game on the 7th, and I'm embarrassed, I don't know who they play. Maybe somebody does. But it doesn't matter, Eagleville will win. But the reason that he invited us, other than the obvious thing, is that he wanted us to know that on that particular night, Eagleville High School is going to honor Mr. Ben Cates, our recreation director for 46 years, who has retired. We've had a very close relationship with Mr. Cates over the years, and they're going to honor him that night, presenting with a plaque, I think. And I'm not sure if they've got enough time to read all the great things he has done, but they're going to try. And he wanted me to invite the board. So, that's on the 7th of September, and they'll probably do it at halftime, I guess. But anyway, game time, I guess, is 6:30, I suppose, I believe, is kickoff. Any other members have general discussion comments? If not, then we'll move on to school security. Mr. Director?
Safe School Grant. Tennessee Department of Education has allocated recurring funds to be used for safe school initiatives. These funds total $439,100. Safe School Grants will be used to pay salary and benefits for the two Student Services staff members, travel expenses, staff development, materials and supplies. Eligible funds in this area will also be used to pay for the fee and travel cost of consultants who provide training for school system employees. In an effort to continue improving communication between school safety personnel, additional communication devices will be purchased as needed. Remaining funds will be used to purchase and install safety items. Motion to approve Safe School Grant application to expand and enhance safe school initiatives.
Questions for the director?
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. A second.
A second.
Ms. Moore, thank you. If there are no further questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number 2.
Number 2, School Safety and Security Grant. The Tennessee Department of Education has allocated one-time funds to be used for school security initiatives. These funds total $1,097,740. School and security grants will be applied to our district's electronic access controls improvements being undertaken. Motion to approve School Safety and Security Grant application.
Questions for the director? Need a motion to approve?
Move.
Mr. Young, thank you. A second?
Okay.
Mr. Estes, thank you. Questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number 3.
SAFE Act Compliance Instrument Self-Assessment. The Tennessee Department of Education has requested that we verify our district has complied with all the reporting requirements established under SAFE Act. We have accomplished this by submitting the necessary documentation to the Tennessee Department of Education Office of Safe and Supportive Schools. In addition, administrator, in addition, administrators, staff and students continue to be trained on our emergency response plans, and copies have been previously submitted to the local law enforcement agencies and other appropriate entities. Motion to approve the SAFE Act compliance package to enhance safe school initiatives for Rutherford County schools.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. A second?
Second.
Mr. Hodge, is that you over here?
Correct.
Mr. Estes, sorry. Joyce, Estes, seconded. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anything else, group? We have reached the adjournment portion of our program, and the gavel is about to be banged. Thank you so very, very much for your help Tuesday and today. We're adjourned.